All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Monday, April 22nd. We are live in the council chambers and also on Zoom. We'll do a roll call. Councilor Patterson, Councilor Tally, Councilor Sheffield, and Deputy Mayor Depot are here. Councilor Piazza is on her way, and Councilor Norris is excused. So the new business, we will start with the Gold Star Bridge project presentation. And with that, Tracy, if you could introduce yourself and the team and what you're here for tonight, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tracy Bray, and I work in the Connecticut Department of Transportation Major Structures Unit. I'm the project manager for the northbound Gold Star Rehabilitation Project. I'd like to thank you for your time and giving us this opportunity to present the project to the city council tonight. So tonight, we have a presentation for you summarizing the proposed project scope for the northbound Bridge Rehabilitation Project and some concepts for the shared use path, which is being designed under a separate project. Your questions and comments are appreciated if they help make the project more successful. But we ask that you please hold questions and comments until the end of the presentation. Before starting on the project details, I'd like to introduce the project design team. So from the Connecticut DOT, we have the Principal Engineer Val Trump, and myself, project manager, and Luis Alfonso, the project engineer. Then, also on the call tonight, we have our Consultant Engineer, Agent TV. From Agent TV, we have Emma Covington-Hilbrun, who is the project manager from Agent TV, and then also Nick Wild, David Schweitzer, David Gill, and Naomi Hodges. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Agent TV to go through the presentation and describe the project to you a little bit further. Nick, are you able to bring out the presentation? Thank you. Give me one second. Okay. Whoa, what's happening here? Sorry, everybody. Okay. All right. Ah, good evening, everybody. Sorry about that. My name is Emma Covington-Hilbrun, and I'm the project manager from Agent TV for the northbound Gold Star Bridge Rehabilitation Project. As many of you may already know, the northbound Gold Star Bridge carries interstate 95 northbound through Connecticut between New London and Groton. Along with the southbound bridge, the Gold Star Bridges are now only bridges in the area and are a vital link along this northeast corridor, connecting interstate traffic in the northeast, bridge traffic within Connecticut, and local traffic between the towns of New London and Groton. On the northbound bridge, exit 85 provides access to the town of Groton and points south towards Pfizer Electric Boat, University of Connecticut, Avery Point, and the Groton London Airport. US Route 1, which is combined with I-95 northbound to cross the danger corridor, also don't go just at this exit. Just past the bridge, left-hand exit 86 connects to Route 184 with further access to Route 12 pointing north toward the naval base. And on the southbound bridge, exit 84 connects to Route 32 and the town of New London, providing access to the US Coast Guard Academy and the Connecticut College, north of the bridges, and then State Pier and Ellam Hospital, south of the bridges. To the southbound exit 83 also provides access to Route 1. The northbound bridge was originally constructed in 1943 to carry two lanes of traffic in both the northbound and southbound directions. With construction of the dedicated identified southbound bridge in the late 1960s, the superstructure of the northbound bridge was partially reconstructed in 1975 to widen the bridge and increase traffic capacity. Now, 50 years on, the northbound Gold Star Bridge is again in need of rehabilitation. The main goal of this rehabilitation project is to strengthen the steel superstructure and increase structural capacity of the bridge to allow permit vehicles to traverse it. Currently, heavy permit vehicles are not allowed to use the bridge and have to take an alternate route to travel through this corridor. The second goal of this rehabilitation project is to perform a full deck replacement of the bridge, steel strengthening repairs, and substructure concrete repairs to restore the bridge to a satisfactory condition rating. This will not only extend the service life of the bridge but also ensure long-term performance and improved system safety. The Gold Star Bridge is currently inspected by ANI to assess its condition. A condition rating is performed for various bridge components and is used to provide an overall characterization of the general condition of the bridge. Condition ratings are determined by comparing the current condition of the bridge to its original asphalt condition or to a previously rehabilitated condition. So for example, a condition rating of 2 is considered critical condition, whereas a 9 is considered excellent condition. Based on the most recent inspection report, the existing deck of the northbound bridge has a current condition rating of 4 or poor. Reconstructed in 1975, this deck system has reached the end of its service life and requires replacement. In addition, the existing traffic barrier is a 32-inch reinforced concrete parapet capped with an aluminum fence. This barrier system is not a crash-tested system, and the aluminum railing is often damaged and difficult to repair. Therefore, the barrier and fence system also needs replacement. The existing steel superstructure also has a condition rating of 4 or poor, and although the structural steel supporting the deck was replaced in 1975, the steel members supporting the full system are original to the 1940s construction. So there is reported section loss or deterioration on various members as well as buildup of pack rust. The structural steel needs to be repaired, strengthened, and repainted. The existing substructures or pairs are also original to the 1940s construction and are mainly comprised of two reinforced concrete columns with a cap connecting the tops. With a condition rating of 5 or fair, the existing pairs are subject to minor repairs such as patching. With routine maintenance, the substructures are considered acceptable to accommodate any additional service life that would be provided to the structure through deck replacement and steel strengthening work. So to quickly summarize the work we'll be performing on the northbound bridge, we'll be strengthening and repairing the structural steel, we'll replace the existing bearings, we'll replace the existing deck, including the light standards and the overhead side structures, we'll replace the existing concrete roadway parapet and fence with a mesh-compliant three-rail steel barrier and a stainless steel mesh fence. And just to clarify, a mesh-compliant barrier is one that has been crash-tested to FHWA standards and provides superior safety to the bridge. We'll also do a full superstructure painting of the structural steel, and we'll repair Now, we'll keep through our proposed construction staging for our rehabilitation work. The construction staging is divided into two main stages. The first construction stage diverts two lanes of I-95 northbound traffic and crosses them over to the southbound bridge, which my colleague, Mr. David Schweitzer, will discuss in more detail in a few moments. Two lanes, two traffic lanes will remain on the bridge and will be diverted to the center of the structure, as you can see in the image on top here. This allows demolition of the existing deck on the north and south faces of the bridge. Prior to any deck removal, debris shielding will be installed to safeguard any roads or buildings beneath the bridge. Once the deck or the faces is removed, the steel strengthening members and repairs will be installed. Once that work is complete, we'll then install the new deck and mesh-compliant barriers. When stage one is complete, we'll then shift the two lanes of traffic from the center of the bridge to the south side of the bridge for construction stage two, which is illustrated in the lower image on this slide. In this stage, we'll demolish the remaining existing deck along the center of the bridge and we'll replace it with the new deck. And again, a debris shield beneath the center of the bridge will also be installed to safeguard any roads or structures beneath. The next few slides will illustrate how we can potentially stage the construction to provide the most efficient schedule. We'll start with stage one deck demolition and steel strengthening in the west approach Gertis spans and the east approach truss and Gertis spans first. So these, on these slides, just highlighted in the light green and the light blue colors. These are primarily land-based spans, and the Gertis spans are primarily where all the steel strengthening work will occur. For this particular construction stage, we anticipate four construction crews would be needed and working simultaneously to complete the stage one demolition phase. After the stage one deck demolition and steel strengthening, we'll then install the new decks in these same spans. We also anticipate needing four crews working simultaneously to complete this work most efficiently, and then with this deck work complete, it will prepare us for the next deck demolition phase. The next deck demolition phase occurs on the faces of the west approach truss span and the main truss span, so again, highlighted in green and blue on this slide. The majority of this work is over the river, and as with the previous phase, we anticipate needing four construction crews working simultaneously to complete this work efficiently. The last stage of construction stage one will install the new deck over the faces of the truss spans using, again, using four construction crews. In construction stage two, we'll move the traffic, we'll shift the traffic from the center of the bridge, or the bridge, the south side of the bridge. We will then demolish and replace the existing bridge deck along the center of the bridge for the full length of the bridge, using the north side of the bridge for additional construction access. The deck replacement work for this stage can be completed with either two or four crews. For example, one crew can work from each end of the bridge towards the middle of the bridge, or one crew can work from each end toward the center of the bridge, and then we can have two crews working from the middle out toward the ends, and then they meet in the middle. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Schweitzer.
Okay, thanks, Emma. Just to give an overview, as Emma had said, we're looking to cross over during construction, we want to cross over two lanes of the northbound traffic onto the southbound bridge, and that's depicted by that green dashed line in the center of this diagram. I-95, both northbound and southbound are shown in the separate blue lines. The dark black lines to each side of the river here are depicting the ramps, Connecticut routes, and US Route 1, where the gray lines are showing a little bit more of the local grid. And then to understand how this I-95 northbound, when it approaches the bridge, it is three lanes wide. I-95 northbound actually widens to the three lanes about a half mile to the west of the bridge. Route 32 southbound along with US 1 and some of the local roadway network adds a lane to the northbound direction, while Route 32 northbound and more local traffic from Huntington Street forms the fifth lane on the bridge. So we have the three lanes approaching from I-95 northbound. We add two lanes from Route 32 and the local grid and have the five lanes crossing the bridge. On the east side in Groton, exit 85 is a lane drop off of the bridge. It takes place on the bridge, and then within 1,500 feet up the bridge, there's the left lane drop of exit 86, which goes to Route 184. The important thing to note about this is that 40% of the traffic that is on the bridge comes from those lane adds from Route 32 and the local bridge, and then also 40% of that traffic drops at exit 85 and exit 86 on the east side, on the Groton side, and then three lanes will continue through with I-95 northbound. In the southbound direction, we have three lanes approaching where exit 86 then becomes the left lane add, adding a fourth lane, while exit 85 from Bridge Street is two lanes that add onto the bridge but quickly merge into one. So again, we have five lanes crossing for the bulk of the bridge. Then exit 84 is a right-hand drop, followed quickly by exit 83, which is also a right-hand drop. And the numbers are very close also. We have a little bit less than 40% added from these two ramps on the Groton side or the east side, while we have a little bit better than 40% dropping on the west side, on the New London side. So this crossover is, as I stated, we're going to be starting this just to the east of Route 32, the overpasses, putting the two lanes in northbound on the southbound bridge, and then crossing it back over onto I-95 northbound on the east side. So as we go to the next slide, we get an idea of what we're going to be doing with the cross-sections. So up at the top there is the existing for both southbound and northbound, and then, if you can see in the middle there, this is stage one, and we want to focus on the left side on the southbound bridge to begin with. We'll have, we have a consistent alignment for both stages. We have the two lanes in the northbound direction and the three lanes in the southbound direction on this bridge in the concrete load condition. As Emma had described, on the northbound bridge, which is on the right side, in stage one, our two lanes of traffic will be in the center as the outer portions of the bridge are constructed. And then in stage two, we'll move the traffic to the south side of the bridge while the center is constructed and the north side of the bridge is available for the contractor to use. So if we go to the next slide, now we want to look at each side in a little bit more detail. So first of all, we'll focus on the New London side or the approach side to the crossover. So now, these stages are consistent, so you're not going to see much difference, but so it'll be a lot more description here in stage one, and then stage two, we'll just note the differences that are taking place. So this green line is showing the two lanes of the northbound traffic that we will cross over to the southbound bridge. I-95 northbound about a half mile to the west is only, only has two lanes, so we will not allow that third lane to develop. We will keep those two lanes consistent, and we'll cross these two lanes over to the southbound bridge. We will have a ramp that comes off of I-95, will create a little exit ramp, so the I-95 northbound traffic that wants to access exit 85 to US 1 and to Bridge Street and downtown Groton will be able to access. The traffic that comes from Route 32 southbound along with US Route 1 and Bridge Street will come on and will merge with that ramp traffic, while the traffic from Route 32 northbound and from other parts in New London, including Huntington Street, will also add on, and those will form the two lanes that will be on the existing northbound bridge during construction. We won't allow these lanes that are in purple, the Route 32 traffic and the local New London traffic, to be on the crossover. It's too difficult of a maneuver, so we're going to keep those separated. When we go to stage two, we will still have those two lanes of the northbound traffic that will cross over. Our ramp traffic will be maintaining pretty much their same functions, we'll just be moving that traffic to the southern portion of the existing northbound bridge to go into stage two construction. On the Groton side, oh, I'm sorry, no, we're going to go back to the cross-section again. So just to reiterate, we stay consistent on the southbound bridge, crossing over those two northbound lanes onto the southbound bridge. On the existing northbound bridge, we're going to maintain those two lanes of traffic. First, in stage one, we'll have them in the center of the bridge. Stage two will have them to the southern portion of the bridge. So if we go along and look at the Archer side or the Groton side, we'll get right into the staging and what that's going to look like. So with this, up again, if you start from the top and work our way down, the green line again, will be those two lanes of the northbound traffic that we've crossed over. We'll bring them back through the median, and they will form the left and the center lanes of I-95 northbound as it continues northerly. We will have exit 86 as a left-hand exit off of the crossover that will direct traffic, will provide access to Route 184. Now, we are going to keep that separated, that left-hand exit traffic will stay separated from I-95 northbound. So the traffic that was on the existing northbound bridge will not have access to Route 184 directly. We'll have to detour that traffic. This is too short of a distance to perform those maneuvers of that weave. If we look at the two lanes of traffic that are on the existing northbound bridge during construction, the blue line is traffic that wants to access I-95 northbound, so that will continue in the easterly direction, will form the right lane by I-95 northbound, while the light blue color will be the lane that diverges from the two to access exit 85. Now, this will access both US Route 1 and Bridge Street. Now, the end of the bridge, this exit ramp actually diverges from the bridge, and the end of the bridge is shown just to the left of where the exit 85 label is in the lower left corner of this image. So what we want to do during stage one is we want to substage this work. So if we go to the next slide, please. You can see at the top there, we're showing where these two lanes will stay and diverge so that we can construct this southerly portion of where the, of the, of the bridge and that exit ramp. And then in the second half-stage of this, we'll call it substage B, we will move that diverge further to the west so we can split that traffic and complete the construction on the center of that bridge, still providing the access to US 1 and to Bridge Street. So then if we go to the second stage, we will have those two lanes of traffic that are on the existing northbound bridge, still diverging, but we will have direct access to Bridge Street and to US 1, while also providing that access to I-95 northbound, which will form the right-hand lane. Again, staying consistent, the two northbound crossover lanes will come back across on the left and center lanes, while exit 86 will still be that left-hand diverge from the crossover, still separated from the traffic that's going to be from the existing northbound bridge. And with that, we're going to have a detour, and another detour that I might have to mention is with this construction of exit 85 with Bridge Street and US 1, while we can show that it will remain open for the majority of the time, there will be some short-term detours for that also. So to talk about those detours, both for what may occur with Bridge Street and for the traffic that wants to get to exit 86, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, David Gill, to walk you through those.
Thank you, David. As David mentioned, there is the potential for short-term detours for the Bridge Street access on exit 85 up of I-95 northbound. This graphic here shows you the essential route to return to Bridge Street via exit 87. So the access from 87 is Route 349. The expectation here to return to Bridge Street is take exit 3 from Route 349, which brings you straight to Bridge Street. That terminus intersection would be controlled by a temporary control signal, and vehicles can turn left and return to their original destination somewhere in Bridge Street. However, those vehicles wishing to continue further south, say to EB, Pfizer, Yukon, Avery Point, they can continue further south on Route 349, and that will be signed as such. Go to the next slide, please. Relative to the exit 86 detour, we're starting on the New London side here with this graphic. Just to remind you that this detour is simply for the Route 32 access. So Route 32, southbound with Bridge Street, Route 32, northbound in Huntington, those on ramps, those merge onto I-95 east of the crossover. They don't have an opportunity to take the crossover. So this route will travel over the northbound bridge, next slide, and again, continue to exit 87. Here, again, similar with the exit 85 detour, the exit 3 off-ramp to Bridge Street will be utilized. The terminus, again, is controlled by a temporary job control signal. Vehicles, instead of turning left to return to Bridge Street, here are turning right off of the terminus intersection to return to Route 1 and Route 12, taking a left to get to Route 12 and Route 184 to the north. Next slide, please. On the New London side, there, there is a detour set up, or that will be set up, to accommodate bridgework in the immediate vicinity of the Route 32 northbound and Huntington Street access. You can see that shown in red as a ramp closure on this graphic. So from Huntington Street, we would divert traffic north on William Street, then turn left onto Bridge Street, which can then turn left onto the existing on-ramp to I-95 northbound. And this is from Huntington Street. The next slide is going to show us the route for Route 32 northbound. So coming from, say, downtown New London, Route 32 northbound, continuing on Route 32 northbound and using the frontage road system here instead. So using North Frontage Road, circling back to Bridge Street, then turning left onto the existing on-ramp to I-95 northbound, and returning to I-95 northbound. And this is just short-term, possibly overnight or weekend detours, but that is impacting both the Route 32 northbound access and Huntington Street access, as we've described here. Okay? Next slide. I'll pass this on to Naomi. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. So I'm just going to briefly go through our environmental and community impact as part of this project. We do have some freshwater wetlands that are located within the project area. We are anticipating some minor temporary impacts to those wetlands, and any impacts will be restored at the completion of construction. There is no in-the-water work currently proposed as part of this project, but we will be accessing the bridge within the river by barbages if necessary, and that work will not require any closures to the navigation channel, so users will be able to use their recreational boats throughout construction. We do know that there's a parrot and zelka nest on the southbound bridge, and there are time-of-fee restrictions associated with protecting that species as well as the construction workers there, and those time-of-fee restrictions will be adhered to throughout the project. Then, there is a historic property within our project area that is Wind Up Mill that is located in New London on the western approach of the project. No permanent impacts are anticipated, however, some temporary impacts will be necessary. Temporary closures will occur to protect the property and access to the property while we're working on the bridge that exists, the destruction that exists above the property, but those will be temporary in nature and short duration. Then, we have the two Thames River boat launches that are located on either side of the Thames River, one in New London, the other in Groton. Temporary pressures are anticipated, two, at least one of the boat launches at the time. Both of the boat launches will not be closed at the same time as part of this project during the boating season. And then finally, I did want to just call out here that we are coordinating with the regulatory agencies. That coordination is ongoing, and we will be preparing permit applications as part of this project with those agencies as well. And if we go to the next slide, you'll just see a general location of where those wetland impacts may be occurring. On the left here, we have New London. There is a small wetland and water course that's located with this area. Only wetland impacts are anticipated here temporarily, and the same is true with the image here on the right in Groton that's located. that's located also underneath the bridge. A small wetland system is also located here, and temporary impacts will occur to that area. Just to note, the, the area that is highlighted is not the area of impact, but just the general location of the wetlands. And as I mentioned before, those impacts are temporary and will be restored at the completion of construction. I'll hand it over to Nick.
So, the existing Bridge Stairs stand over several active freight rail lines, both on the New London and Groton side. On the New London side, there are two reactive lines that we will need to coordinate our construction effort with. We'll be coordinating with them during design, go over the anticipated impacts and understand the flagging needs and any lifting restrictions that they have for their, for their lines. From a utility impact standpoint, there are utilities that are pole-mounted that go underneath the structure on Mill Street and Crystal Ave. The Mill Street line appear to be communication lines, and the Crystal Ave has both electrical and communication, both of which will need to be temporarily relocated as part of the effort to lift, lift the new steel members in these areas. That coordination is ongoing. From a right-of-way impact standpoint, as Naomi mentioned, the mill property will be impacted over here for some access needs. And generally, within the vicinity of the bridge, there will need to be construction access for the structural steel modifications that are anticipated. We are looking to identify some contractor working areas for layout and equipment. One of the properties that will be identified, shown here on the New London side, and also potentially in the boat launch area for placement of the crane. As Naomi mentioned, any impact to the boat launches will be coordinated to make sure that one remains open at all times. And then, on the Groton side, similarly, we have two freight lines that travel beneath the structure. We'll be doing a similar coordination effort with those groups to identify any impacts to them. There are no permanent anticipated utility impacts as part of the bridge work. There's also no permanent right-of-way impacts as part of the bridge work, but we would expect some temporary access needs beneath the structure. And with that, I'll pass it to Tracy, top cost and scheduling.
Thank you, Nick. So, to wrap up this project's presentation, the estimated construction cost at this point is about $592 million. We did receive the, a grant from the Bridge Investment Program. It's a thorough, high-end program. And we will be using $158.2 million, that's the amount that is awarded, towards the construction of this, this project. The rest of the cost will be covered with 90% title funds and 10% state funds. And then, 0% municipal funds are required to cover the construction of this project. Now, assuming that we get all the temporary right-of-way acquisitions in place and permit approvals in place, we're anticipating that the, the final design plan, the final design submission will be completed in December of 2024, and that this project will go out for construction or for advertising in February 2025. Based on our current schedule, we anticipate that construction will start in the summer of 2025. As many of you may be aware, there is a project in construction currently on the northbound Gold Star Bridge. We're calling it Phase 1A, where they are doing repairs on the truss spans. So, those are the, the spans mostly over, over the waterway. That is currently anticipated to wrap up the construction in June 2025. So, the thought is that that construction will be wrapping up, and then we'll start on the next phase, this northbound rehabilitation project soon after, in the summer of 2025.
What are we doing? Yeah, we're not.
We can continue on to the next project? Or if you guys have questions or comments?
Sorry, Tracy, for the, we're going to hold on the next project. For now, we just wanted to do the north, north and southbound discussion for, for today's meeting.
Okay. You don't want to talk about the, the roundabout concept or?
Nope.
Okay. Sounds good.
Sierra, take, so that we can, and then I'll open it for discussion.
Can you stop sharing the screen so we can go back to the battery view?
All right, we're good. All right. I'll open the floor for discussion from the council. So, the only thing I want to talk about today was the construction project, north and southbound projects. Any questions on that? Councilor Sheffield?
Hello, thank you all for, for coming this evening. I cross the bridge every single day, well, five days a week, coming off Huntington to go northbound, to go across the bridge. And I had, you know, major concerns right at the V coming in. There was serious concrete damage right at the lip as you're going onto the bridge. I'm hoping that would been maybe addressed a little sooner. But I was hoping maybe, maybe construction would start a little bit sooner. But, you know, I guess, you know, summer of next year, I guess, whenever the time is, I guess, available. But I'm hoping at some point, as we do all these other stuff, I see along the right-hand side of the bridge going north, construction work being done. But I have major concerns coming off Huntington onto that lip there. There's quite a bit of damage there, and hope that gets addressed at some point.
Okay. Councilor Piazza? You had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for such extensive work and research and so forth and everything. I just wanted to ask, some questions were already answered. I was just writing down some. So, one of my things is when they start the construction, so they have had some construction across the way. I live in Groton, but I actually face the river. So, a lot of people have had complaints about clanging and banging over New London. I just wanted to know, has anybody researched and how much noise this will produce and about the hours that this would happen?
So, we, we have some numbers from typical projects as to the noise levels that we anticipate. Again, it'll come down to the contractors' means and methods. But for the most part, I think we're, we're looking at standard hours for construction during the day. There's usually like a work shift between eight and four or so. There, there may be times where night work will need to be performed, especially during those periods where we have the off-peak detours. We will, as we progress the design, we'll certainly look at the noise levels that were anticipated and look to minimize noise levels, the impacts to especially residents or businesses.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes. Another question I had was, so when we were speaking of taking Exit 85 and temporary closing for Bridge Street and extend it out to Exit 87 and coming back onto 349 and swinging onto the bridge. So, I'm a school bus driver. I go back and forth over the bridge four or five times a day. So, so when we're taking traffic that actually exits off of 85 onto the bridge, sometimes that gets backed up quite a bit. So, I'm thinking that when we get onto this 349 and come, come around that little circle onto Bridge, it's actually not very lengthy. And I'm, so my only concern is, as a school bus driver and having, I just, you know, I'm just thinking about what kind of, so the things that we look at is looking ahead and looking around. You know, what other vehicles would be able to look ahead and see maybe possibly some stopped school buses? And I'm thinking about students being on there, and hopefully, nobody slamming into them because it is a very short circle to come back to, circle on the bridge, take the left on the bridge. Because that is one of the stops I do is actually off of 85. So, that's a concern for me. So, I didn't know if, if that was in the play or to think about, but that was, it's just a concern for me. If you're starting in 2025, and, you know, we have a, we actually drive in Groton for out-of, out-of-district schools. There's elementary in New London, there's a high school in New London. We also have Norwich Tech and other schools. And then, needless to say, other schools, other towns coming into Groton for Grosso Tech. And so, I just wanted to make a note of that to you all. And my other question is, when you talk about temporary impacts on wild, on the, on the wetlands, could you say what type of impacts would that be?
Yeah, absolutely. So, for the impacts on the wetlands, that is associated with the temporary shoring that is needed to do the bridge strengthening. There would be temporary structures beneath the, the bridge. I don't know if we have any diagrams, but I think it would look like, but basically, like, like temporary shoring, and those will be there for the expense of where the strengthening will be to occur. And then, once it's complete, those temporary structures would be removed, and then the disturbed soils will be restored.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depo?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I just want to say thank you for the thorough presentation. My first thought when you first started talking was, this is good because we're the people usually that get asked what's going on, even though it's a DOT project and we have nothing to do with it. People will ask us what's happening with the project. My main question, because I, the presentation was really thorough, and I will be able to pass along a lot of good information. Should we be directing, if residents have questions, should we be directing them directly to the project? Should we be directing them to the mayor to pass on to DOT or ask questions or? So, so residents should directly contact DOT if they have a question or a issue or they think they want to give input?
So.
Here, take.
I just don't want to tell, I just don't want to tell someone, oh, yeah, contact the mayor's office if you have a question, and he's just going to send it to DOT anyways, if they have like an inbox or something where residents can send questions, comments?
I will follow up with Tracy on potential inbox, but I will say that on April 30th, we are hosting DOT's public kind of information session on this project. So, that would be April 30th at 7:00, that would be in auditorium. There will be a notice that goes out for that as it gets closer. And Tracy, by chance, is there a proper email or anything that you would like the community to utilize at this time? One moment, okay. We will follow up on that.
I had too many windows open. Yes, we have a general email that we're using. We put it in the public notice, so it's put in the newspapers. It is, and I can send it to you all afterwards. Capital D, capital O, capital T, dot, capital G, O, L, D for gold, capital S, T, or you can share my screen too. S-T-A-R, star, capital B, R-I-V-G-E, capital P-R-O-J-E-C-T-S at C-T dot gov. So, it should be DOT dot goldstarbridgeprojects at C-T dot gov. As I mentioned previously, there, there is a strengthening project proposed for the southbound structure. There's also another project for the shared use path and pedestrian improvements. And this email address should be used for all questions on any of the Gold Star Bridge projects.
Perfect, thank you.
So, playing off of this, did we decide that we are, that we are going to do a public hearing on the 30th? There was a discussion about whether or not we needed to do that or not, and whether or not DOT needed to do that. So, have we made that decision?
Um, yes. And it's not a hearing, it's more of an information session for the, for the bridge work.
And that's on the 30th?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, today's the 22nd, so we need to get that advertised so that the people that were trying to get there, the residents, can get notified.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this presentation? This is informing only, and, okay? That's it. Thank you all for coming out, thank you for your time.
Thank you all for your time. Good evening.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the next thing, new business, which is, and the new business for others is budget presentations. Sierra, you're up for economic development. It starts on page 48. This is informing.
Okay, so. Give you guys a chance to get there.
Okay. So, present your budget to the council.
Okay. So, going by line items, I'll start with contractual services. So, you will notice in this budget that we have just some things that we have completed and that aren't carrying over our resiliency planning and project portfolio. We are in the process of wrapping up our capacity building work and updating our plan of conservation and development. So, you will notice that funding, there's minimal funding that at this time that will be allocated to that because we are already using some distant, existing allocated funds to complete that project. And we are also wrapping up the brand management services that we are using with Miranda Creative for the launch of Groton History, History in the Making. So, those are two projects that you will notice have came, basically kind of fell off from this budget. And, yes, so two, those two things have fallen off. We've also been able to utilize grant funding for the resiliency work to continue some potential projects there. We are looking to work, continue to work with DOT and the consultant group that you just met to further the Bridge Street gateway concepts that we have been talking about for the last couple of years now. We've had some iterations of what the concept can look like and would like to move forward to a demonstration project. Definitely updating with the state and making sure that both designs kind of correlate. But this provides the city of Groton an oppor, an opportunity to really engage not only our staff but our community members in what that intersection could possibly look like, bringing in, obviously, there being traffic pattern changes for the automobiles, but also bringing in a pedestrian component and a cyclist component to that entryway. So, you will notice there, there is a use of funds in that category and kind of brings it a little bit over the budget by 1,500 just to allocate for that and keeping everything else going. As far as office supplies, you will see an increase in this use. That is to, uh, software and platforms for some of the projects that we are keeping on has shifted toward that expense. So, things such as Basecamp, which we use, Basecamp and Constant Contacts are things that we use for our newsletter outreach or newsletter development and then sending that information out. And then, Blue Dot is a platform that I use with the Economic Development Commission for our business outreach and to notate all of that. So, those used to be in contractual services, and we moved those down to an appropriate line item. And then, such things as cell phone, internet for my tablet. Uh, and then such things as cell phone, um, internet for my tablet, copy machine, all that stuff is included within there. As far as vehicle operations, um, this is going to be the first fiscal year that I will actually have access to a city vehicle. So um, the increase there is acknowledging that. It is the um, two thousand and nine Ford SUV. Um, we provided a little bit of a cushion um, just to, for unanticipated repairs that may come along with an older vehicle. Um, but I thank you to the Building and Zoning Office who have currently um, brought it up to date where I can use it um, in an effective fashion. Um, so as far as professional development, um, there was a slight increase there. Um, I am pursuing, uh, one, there's a number of conferences and meetings um, that the Planning and Economic Department um attends and that will cover that expense as well as further education on um, economic development and best practices to um, pull to the city. So I'll be starting a course for that in this next coming fiscal year to, to move that forward. As far as materials and supplies, um, we are main uh, continuing our placemaking series of things. So we have planters that are going um, out. Those usually go out in the fall. We've heard an interest to continue that and um, sorry, those usually go out in the spring and we have received interest to continue those until the fall. Um, we're also doing things like the Bridge Street banner upgrades, et cetera, that um, this money will pull from. We are also looking to do more community engagement. Um, community engagement is the foundation of a lot of the projects that planning and economic development does and to being able to put together engaging programming that brings people out um, and also provides them an opportunity to really learn what we're doing and be a part of that, I think is important to our work as we move forward. And also, I guess last thing is the Economic Development Grant Program um, that has not, not recommending an increase at this time, keeping it at its current ten thousand dollar allocation and then um, continuing to work the, the, the program and advertise it. We are getting a lot more traction. I think we're about in this third year of the program now. And so um, yeah, we almost maxed out our current ask and so would want to do that again with another um year and then further flesh out the need for that program moving forward.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll open the floor for discussion. Counselor Sheffield?
Thank you. Okay, Sierra. Um, as far as the advertising um, expense now, like I said, you went high this past year over twelve thousand. Will eleven thousand be enough for this coming fiscal year or would you think?
For the office and advertisement, I think that that amount should cover.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm finding this budget and the planning budget a little bit frustrating because, so for example, for the vehicle, that's seven hundred and eighty-five dollars a month across both your budgets for the vehicle, correct? Because that's the same vehicle. So, that to me seems like kind of a high cost to be investing in a two thousand and nine vehicle. It almost would seem to me that we should maybe buy a vehicle for your department. It might be a better investment than to plan for almost a thousand dollars of repair every month. Is that, you know, that, it just seems like that maybe not be the best use of that money. Um, especially when we're moving towards electric vehicles and we have electric chargers. You know, that seven hundred and eighty-five does include the, the gas, the fuel costs in here, but if we were to purchase an electric vehicle and price that out, I mean, how much per month is an electric vehicle versus plan, the, what we're planning here uh, when we have the electricity to charge ourselves? Um, so just that to me kind of doesn't make sense. To put that, to, to plan for that much money for something like that. Um, but I will stop beating that dead horse. Um, so you said that the office supplies and advertising is now going to include cost for uh, Constant Contact, Blue Dot, those kind of things that you're using? Does the estimated year end include that but not the current year budget?
The estimated year end for this year does include those.
So your budget request for this year did not include them?
For the current fiscal year, yes, we have. They were in there, they were just under contractual services.
Right, so that's my question. So the, the number five thousand two hundred dollars did not include Constant Contact, Blue Dot, those other programs that you're using, correct? Because they were in the contractual services line?
For last year, correct.
This current fiscal year?
Are, are you understanding the question?
I'm not, and I think because I have a different format.
So under office supplies and advertising, your, the current fiscal year budget, the year we're in, was five thousand two hundred dollars. The, those programs, Constant Contact, et cetera, were not in that five thousand two hundred dollar number. They were in the forty-six thousand from contractual services. If we move over to the next line, under estimated year end, does that twelve thousand nine hundred and eleven include those programs or no?
Yes.
So question to the finance director, why would we put something under that line item under this fiscal year when it wasn't under that line item for the original budget for this fiscal year? It just makes the budget look kind of confusing because then I'm looking at the, the estimated year end is twelve thousand nine hundred and eleven and then we're requesting less than that. But we're saying we're adding to that line item. The thing that worries me is, is that enough considering you're adding more to that line item? And also, it kind of makes these two numbers, the current year budget and estimate, it looks like you overspent, but you didn't really, you spent from a different line item. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I know your question. I cannot answer why it was budgeted one category and charged to another category. That would have been on the department level.
Okay.
That, what, what created that, what created that change from moving it from contractual to office?
So, so what makes it hard is that it's almost like we co-mingled that, right? And then, but then I'm sure you're going to go to contractual services next, right? So I'll let you continue your line of questioning and then I will add if I need to.
So the, if we've moved, that's like seven thousand dollars, a little more than that, from contractual services to office supplies and advertising, but we still underspent by twenty-five thousand in contractual services, but then we're still asking for forty-seven five. So you're saying we moved seven thousand dollars, seventy-five hundred bucks out of that budget into the other line, also underspent by twenty-five thousand dollars, but then we're still requesting forty-seven thousand five hundred. And then i- if we go all the way back to the, the prior fiscal year, we only spent seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. So what worries me is we're over asking potentially for an amount that we might not spend in for a budget that's going to go up nine point three five percent. I feel like that doesn't make sense to me to continually underspend on a line, but then ask for more.
So, I think there may have been, I think where the confusion comes from is, so contractual services has been treated as where the projects go. And if there are certain elements within a project, so um, Basecamp and Constant Contact, they were all tied to the branding work. Since we're completing our work with Miranda Creative, um, those are line items that are still going to maintain. That's something the city's going to maintain moving forward. So it kind of went into the office and it went into the office line items for advertisement as I don't think I'm answering your question fully well here. And the other thing I'm kind of a little bit concerned on is I think the actual expenditures I have are to January that were presented previously. So that may not reflect because I'm currently am maxed out of my budget um, as far as expenses out. So this may not show a true reflection of, of that process.
So you currently have spent more than the twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty in contractual services?
Yes, or, or plan to that, things that are allocated to um, projects that we are currently active in.
So when you put together your estimated year end, did you account for costs that you were planning in the next several months or was that not accounted for?
Um, when I did the actuals for expenditures, I did it to um, the date that when our budgets were due.
We, we didn't.
Of what was actually.
We didn't annualize, I'm sorry, we didn't annualize that?
When I provided it, it was just of what we spent to date, not necessarily everything that was projected to come out.
Ron, can you provide some clarity?
Uh, and actually, this was the sheet that was submitted. So there was the ones through January and then there was the estimate.
Okay, and then. And sorry, your question is, why does it seem like we're underspending in this line item because of the twenty-one, um, twenty-one thousand three hundred, five hundred compared to the forty-seven, five hundred?
Right, because even if, so if, if that's correct, the twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty, you're saying that about seven thousand of that was moved to office supplies and advertising, so minus.
And then the remaining of that was also then moved to materials and supplies um, of this fiscal year because of an error that was made at the beginning of the last fiscal year.
Okay, so my question then is, why do we need forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in that line item of the budget if we moved and plan to continue to charge those other items to other lines?
Because as those projects fall off or br- bringing forward another, so strategic communications came off, but some fees are still going to maintain. Um, instead of that falls off, but then the Bridge Street Gateway project comes into play and that's a whole new project. So that brings that cost back up to the forty-seven, five, because that's something that wasn't originally planned into. That wasn't in my previous budget. So it's like we completing one project, starting a new project. So that's why the, the funding is.
So broadly across, it's hard to disconnect the two budgets because the planning budget is kind of intertwined because it also has costs for the gateway project included there. So I, I think my, part of my issue is we've got increased costs under contractual services for the planning budget for the Bridge Street Gateway project, increased costs under contractual services for the economic development budget for the Bridge Street Ga- Gateway project. In both of these budgets, those line items seem to be every year, it's, oh, we couldn't spend it because of this, we couldn't spend it because of this, which it's not that those aren't good reasons or, you know, things happen and I understand that, but it's frustrating to keep approving more and more money. And for because your budgets are so intertwined, I think that maybe if it's possible to get some kind of breakdown of here's all the things that cross our budgets and this is the percentage allocated to planning, this is the percentage al- allocated to economic development and this is why. Because to me, it looks a little bit like double dipping because I don't have any details. So it feels like we're just dumping money into contractual services in case we're able to get these projects off the ground. And in the last couple of years, they've, things often are getting delayed. So I think m- my request is to maybe get some more details on those two, because your budgets two are so project controlled, like uh, they're so controlled by, by what projects we have going. Um, and they cross so much that it's difficult to assess the accuracy and the productivity of these budgets without more details. Um, and then I and I, and I said this during the planning budget too. It, it's frustrating that we have all these and Leslie did give some information on the projects and the, the RFPs are written for some of them and all of that. But I feel like in my head, I'm thinking they didn't get done before, why are we still putting money? How are we sure we're going to spend that money this year? And I think that's my thing. I want to be sure if I'm voting to increase money into your budget, that you're going to spend it because last year you didn't. And residents notice that and they ask all the time. I saw this, I went to this workshop a year and a half ago, whatever happened with that project? So, and that's very common because of the publicness of what you do in economic development. So I guess I kind of want to be able to answer that question for people before I approve this budget, which is why are we giving more money when I did a workshop a year and a half ago and that project's still not done? Um, and I know that's frustrating and I'm not trying to be like a stickler, but I.
I understand. Um, I would say in addition to that, do you also, I know the Bridge Street Gateway is of the focus kind of of this discussion, um, is that the only project that you would?
She, base, go ahead, you speak for yourself.
No, I, um, it's just the one that was brought up and it's kind of the current um, one that we're focused on, but um, in terms of projects, we do have a lot going on. I think at one point you had some kind of chart that showed the list of projects and then like where our timeline was on all of them. I think that chart has a name, but I don't remember what it is. But um, and I think that was, that's very, a very useful visual. Is that kind of chart where you list all the projects and you had like the stages of them and where we are in each stage. That, I, it wasn't all that long ago that you did that last, but um, that would be very helpful, I think. Um, and maybe to show what our original date was for each stage and what our actual date is for each stage. So that we could see, like if there's three projects on there, we meant, we wanted to start them in, say, twenty twenty and then COVID happened, you know, like December twenty twenty, but then we couldn't and we started it, you know, December twenty-two or whatever to see, oh, well, that's why that money didn't get spent because these things got in the way. Um, but some kind of timeline comparison to see what is happening, wh- what has happened with the, the budget because it's going to be very hard for me to approve more funding in a budget that two years in a row, at least if not more, has not used the funding that we've designated um, in the past when we weren't doing an overall tax increase. I felt it, it's worth pursuing those projects and doing that, but this year we're increasing taxes. And well, the mayor's proposing that we increase taxes and I uh, don't like the idea of doing that if we're not sure we're going to spend the money that we get from the taxes.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So, so basically you guys need to get together. We, the council votes on this on the twentieth of May. So uh, we could do this on the May thirteenth, but you guys talk about, you know, present together your budgets, your overlap, what projects you have, why you need this money to explain to the council. Uh, and if you can do that effectively, then they'll take that into account. If you're ineffective, then you probably definitely get cut. So, because I, I understand where Deputy Mayor Depot's coming from is that we ask for money, but we don't spend the money. And maybe in the past, when uh, taxes weren't going to go up, that didn't matter, but now the taxes are. And maybe in the past, when uh taxes weren't gonna go up, that didn't matter, but now the taxes are gonna go up. Why raise taxes if you're not gonna get something done? Right, we wanna right-size it and we forecast what we're gonna spend and we spend what we're gonna forecast. Is that kinda close?
Yes. Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
So I I I don't know if this falls on the finance director or not, but I um have we, did we do an assessment of whether buying a new vehicle would make more sense or? I know that new vehicles also are on delay, it could be don't get them right away um.
We have not done an internal needs assessment per se. This was just a vehicle that became available and the department didn't have one, so it was to try to repurpose. Um, but there has been no analysis done as far as like a needs version and then a new vehicle versus the used vehicle cost.
Which which makes sense, it totally makes sense. I just thought, especially we did the EV ribbon cutting the other day and just looking at the costs of for this department, I feel like it it is at least worth looking at whether that amount of money would warrant us auctioning off that old vehicle or whatever you dispose of it and um getting something newer, also more reliable. So poor Sierra doesn't get stranded on the side of the road.
The other thing with that, so we had a found vehicle, for lack of a better term, so we repurposed the vehicle for here. Uh, they had not this, these departments, uh this department had not had a dedicated vehicle in the past and it had not been an issue, that could that could be an internal discussion, is there a need? And if there is a need, what kind of vehicle should it be and go through that whole analysis, you're right. Uh, we said, okay, we have a we have a vehicle, let's repurpose it for this use and that's kinda why the numbers are a little high cuz we didn't know, but understand your your point of view. Please, Deputy Mayor Depot.
I do think that you two should have a vehicle, the amount that Sierra drives around, driving her own vehicle to businesses in the city um and for planning, sometimes you probably have to check out a property and get physically look at it and I do think, just like the building department has a vehicle to go inspect stuff, um you guys should have a reliable vehicle. I do think it's smart to share one because I don't think that you probably would get a ton of use out of it if you each had one, but I I do think it would be good for you to have one to share for um driving around. As much as you do.
Any other questions or councillor Sheffield and then I'll go to councillor Piazza.
Sierra, as far as again these contractual services, now there's projects in the pipeline that need to be, you know, funds need to be available if they come to fruition. Are you expecting these projects to come through and then have the money available to you? So I mean, that's, I guess, part of the reason why you give the extra to to make sure projects are paid for cuz obviously, you know, if you come up short, then of course you'd have to come to us to ask for more money. So if you firmly believe that, you know, you're gonna need this money and these projects are gonna come due, then I guess um I wouldn't have a problem, but obviously when, you know, and getting back to discussing um planning with Ron last last week where um or two weeks ago, um whether what we don't spend goes to the general fund and I guess we can again reallocate it for the next year or the next term. I mean, I guess it's fine long as these projects are gonna keep moving forward. So if you're confident that these projects are gonna come together um and the money that we're allocating or potentially allocating is gonna be necessary, then um that I don't have a problem with, but of course, back to Deputy Mayor Depot's point where, okay, if if uh projects aren't going to be there and we keep postponing and things aren't gonna happen, then uh then obviously we have to, you know, reassess, you know, the budget. So, you know, I agree with that part, so.
Okay, so for the councillors, let me remind you, our budget works. The money gets spent by June thirtieth or it goes back to the general fund. It is not carried over from year to year. If it is encumbered, meaning PO, a purse order has been cut, then that money can be used, but the money goes back to the general. Councillor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say, thank you for all the clarification, um that does help and um so I think it's the same what uh councillor Sheffield and Deputy Mayor Depot said. I think so, moving forward, if we're gonna have this meeting on the thirteenth, I think so. I'm not sure fiscal year twenty four needs to be done, but uh I think just for clarity for our constituents is like, yeah, we had, you know, A, B and C D project and these are the reasons that they didn't move forward. You know, just it doesn't have to be anything lengthy. I think that helps if we have people asking us. And then also for twenty five, cuz I mean, I was even thinking when we had this presentation from the bridge, immediately I was thinking about your project for the gateway project, I'm like, oh, what does that do to the gateway project? Is that, you know, you're gonna bring it together, is it gonna be delayed or something like that, you know? But I also think too, if you have S- B and C didn't get done because something out of your control, I mean, you make a budget and then you have something out of your control, there's nothing we can do much about it, you know, if we have our plans and whatever, it's something out of your control. My other question, I'm not sure who this would be for, but in reference to the vehicle, do we have um the vehicles used for departments, do we have a percentage of vehicles that are electric and and those that are gas?
We have one electric vehicle.
One electric vehicle, okay, and all the other departments use gas?
That's right, but my my direction has been when we start to, anytime we're gonna replace vehicles, my preference is go to an electric vehicle unless there's a compelling reason not to do that. Cuz we have the electric chargers, just why we put that there, we have the electric charger over in Washington Park. And then as soon as we get the head changed out in Washington Park, we're going to start charging uh for the electric vehicles for people to charge. And then uh as we replace vehicles, they will be replaced with electric vehicles.
Okay, so that's in the making of the, so I guess when we do the needs assessment, we'd be looking at how much electric vehicles actually are gonna cost, especially a new one, which I find is quite expensive um compared. So when the this vehicle became available, so this you had directed it to go to economic development and planning? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, that's it. Thank you, Sierra. Ron, you're up, finances on page twenty nine. You wanna do the, do that, do your present, do you wanna do, which do you wanna do first? Okay, then go ahead and do your, do your presentation, then we'll, we have an update based on something, I'll let Ron go into that in just a minute.
All right, just make sure everybody's good. So the the finance budget, there is a proposed increase of uh roughly a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars or twenty one point five five percent. This is due to the wage increase of twenty nine percent or a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, which is created one by the contract negotiations um during the last round of negotiations as well as the splitting of one position that was a senior accountant slash purchasing agent position. When trying to fill that, it was a little challenging with trying to find those people with the two different skill sets. So we had an internal conversation with the utilities because that was mainly a city purchasing agent only. So we are gonna utilize that position to also do utility purchasing or assist with the utility purchasing. The finance budget is funded fifty fifty, meaning fifty percent taxes, fifty percent by the utilities. So a portion of this budget actually comes from the utility side. The um, so the total personnel costs, when we look on page thirty two, they increased a hundred and seventy three thousand or twenty six percent, which is at six six two to the eight thirty five, and again, that's driven by the the additional FTE and the additional benefit costs that go with it. When we look at the operating expenses, stayed flat for the most part, with the exception of utilities, fuel and safety. And this dropped down from the seventy eight thousand to the two thousand, which was due to the Bosser office being relocated ba- or being lo- relocated to the city municipal building and the vehicle um allowance went away. So that was what dropped that that line down. So when we look at the other um operating expenses, the office and advertising is stay the same at the twenty two thousand. That covers um the office supplies, the copy releases, the mailings from the the um AP checks, the paper, the envelopes, all the supplies that come out of our office, including like the ordering of the actual AP checks themselves, which we just did, that's which is roughly like a seven hundred dollar charge in the one shot. So that's makes up that line. You'll see that in two twenty thir- twenty twenty three, it was at thirteen thousand five forty eight, projected at seventeen thousand one thirty one for the current year. So from a historical, it's been roughly stayed around that that amount. Currently, year to date, right as of today, we're at thirteen thousand two thirty four in that account. The budget's always stayed at the twenty two, but again, historically, we've we've come in around six sixteen thousand um in in that expense line. Contractual service is the big piece of that, which is seventy seven thousand. You'll see that in twenty twenty three, the the actual number is only twenty nine thousand. The tax collections for the town of Groton was not paid in the twenty three budget, which is a thirty three thousand roughly, and it got posted into the twenty four. So it's missing that, it got doubled up in twenty twenty and then it's kind of lagged, so that's why the contractual service is is low for twenty three. Historically, that line in twenty twenty one was eighty one thousand, fifty two thousand twenty twenty two and currently, year to date, it's at fifty five thousand. That also covers the legal um bills that we have and the audit are the main factors that may drive the contractual service line. It also has a little bit of a room in there in case there is some sort of um additional service that we need to do from the finance side, there's additional project um that comes comes out of the department. So for the most part, that that is the finance budget overall.
Any questions, comments on the finance budget, councillor Sheffield?
Uh, so Ron, so the uh account and purchasing agent, you have both those positions filled or they're still pending?
They're pending, we we have purchasing agent, one is out, we have resumes and we're going through the process now with that one. And then once that position is filled, then we will advertise for the senior accountant. One of the delays with this was during negotiations, it's they're both union positions, so we brought that in during the negotiation factor to split that position into two.
Councillor Piazza and then I'll go to Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so if we're driving um in reference to looking at all these budgets, and this is not to be picking, but so if we have, let's go to your office supplies and advertising, so if it's um estimated seventeen thousand, I think you said you were at fifteen right now or sixteen, or it's averaged to sixteen?
Yeah, I'm currently for office supplies as of right this second, that thirty thirteen thousand two thirty four.
Thirteen thousand, but I think you said you had an average about sixteen.
Yeah.
So I was wondering, since that's pretty consistent, why wouldn't we even like maybe even try to drop that to twenty thousand instead of twenty two? I mean, it's just to, it's just something to look at, is there something to assess, I mean, would that hurt?
I mean, that we we can always change it, it's just we we always build in cuz we don't know the supplies that we need um on a given year to year, so that that is why we it's historically left at the twenty two.
Right, right, so historically, but I mean, for a budget, we're we're going to actual facts. And so I was just wondering if we're, you know, you're saying over so many years, we averaged about sixteen thousand, so I was like, okay, just for wiggle room, we could chop off two thousand and do something with that um or place it somewhere else. It's just a it's a suggestion, but I mean, if we're looking at everything for numbers for each department, I think it's something that should be suggested. Thank you.
Well, on the thirteenth, you know, when we bring Sierra and Leslie back, I'm gonna ask the council then to give me their recommendations for changes to the budget. Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the salaries, um you said that they went up due to union negotiations. The current year budget for the finance assistant, utility accountant and the payroll accountant, all of them, all of their uh actual, well, estimated year end is much higher. Is that the result of the union negotiations directly?
Cor- correct, because that was retroed back to July one.
Okay. So my question then is the proposed budget, those increases are quite large, so are you saying that the payroll accountant was making sixty four thousand and that the new negotiation is that that one person is getting a twenty percent raise?
So, yeah, so when you look at the sixty four, that did not include any increases in last year's. That what, we didn't put any increase for that in the goes for for the union negotiations. So when you look at, that's why the actual is around seventy four thousand for the current year, for the estimate. But yes, that was based on the on the negotiations.
And and this group, the CSEA group, was one of the lowest paid uh group of employees that we had.
So over, so even then though, over two years, then that person is getting a twenty percent raise from two years ago.
It it could be, if that's what the numbers want to be, then yes, that'd be accurate.
But there will not be a cost of living increase for this year, right? Or was that for last year?
That was for last year.
Last year, sorry.
Okay, um. That seems.
I think it was two five, right?
I believe so.
I think it's two five.
And then my other question is, and I know you're gonna hate this question, but I'm gonna ask it just for the answer. We went the year without a senior accountant. Was there any consideration instead of splitting both the positions, or is it even possible, union wise, to have one of those positions be part-time? The purchasing agent or the senior accountant, because we've been operating without them.
And we've been struggling without those positions. And then, like you said, with that purchasing agent position, now gonna be also doing utility purchasing and assisting with that, that it, with the discussions that we had with the utilities department head and general manager at the time, that that there was a need for that and that they would be able to fill the time and utilize the time.
So can you explain what a purchasing agent does?
Does all the procurement for the city, meaning putting bids out, um auctioning vehicles, doing all the office supply orders, we could potentially work on trying to centralize some of that ordering.
So when you come here and you say, oh, we're gonna put a bid out for this car, you go back and you go to the purchasing agent and say, go put a bid out for this car.
They will work with the department to put all that together, to put the contracts together and and see that through.
But right now, the individual's doing that, look, you're looking at him. And so I wanna get this purchasing agent hired so that I can free Ron up to do other stuff that I need him to do. Same with the senior accountant. So it's it it has been a couple of years, part of the challenge we run into is that the job descriptions are in the collective bargaining agreement, which we're trying to get out, we've been unsuccessful in getting them out of the the uh the agreement. So we split them this time because when we went out with resumes to try to hire, we were basically looking for a unicorn and we and that's why we split them. So we could find accounting people, we could find purchasing people, but we couldn't find people that were a hybrid of accounting and purchasing at the level we were looking for.
So the salary for the purchasing agent, you have set at eighty one thousand three hundred ten dollars, is part of the reason we've been having trouble hiring because of the salary of that position that we had, or?
N- no, it's just finding the qualified candidate that had all the skill set.
So we think that that salary is sufficient to get a person with that skill set?
Well, we do now, I mean, y- you're right, but one of the things that in our 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 negotiations with the unions and with the non-union employees is to make sure that we right-size our salaries so that we can be competitive and not lose people. we right-size our salaries so that we can be competitive and not lose people and get people to come here and work for us. Did that answer your question or did I go?
Yes. No, that answered my question. I, of all the places for an increase, obviously, I appreciate, we want to pay our employees well. That's always my, I, I do care a lot about that. It's a big increase for your department to sustain percentage-wise, obviously not numbers-wise compared to other departments. But I will say, just, you know, looking at the, the math of how it comes from the utility, it is, it does look like we're adding a large amount to the budget, but it's only 83,643 from the tax base and that same amount from the utility, which I think is reasonable considering you've been without that position for so long. But yeah, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ron, let's go do the present, the other, oh, do you want to do something else?
Did you want to go through the?
The non-departmentals?
Non-departmentals, which are part of finance as well.
Which one?
Yeah, the non-departmentals that are part.
Uh, yes, let's go ahead and, and talk about them as well. So if you go to the last tab, the gray tab, non-departmentals.
So it's page 93. The first one is general insurance, which remained flat at 120,000. This is to cover the USI consultant portion of that fee along with some other, the insurance programs that we have. You see historically, it went from 95,000 in 2023. The estimate for 2024 is about 106,000. Not knowing what the insurance market's going to be, going in, we, we know that the, we, we have a feeling property may be a challenge this year, just based on the marketplace in itself. So we, we feel that we're still comfortable leaving at that at the 120, just based on the historical and that will, should cover any potential increases that we do see when we renew our policy for the next fiscal year. And then page 96, this is, this is a spot that we can look at. Again, what this was, was for increases that we were proposing. There are some budgets that did go, that were already approved before the salary adjustments were, were given. So that we need to keep a buffer here to cover those additional increases. However, originally, we weren't sure if they were going to be adjusted in this line or if some of those adjustments were going to fall back into the department. So we can, we can look at this again to see if this amount may be a little bit high for, for current adjustments. But that's what this category, or this, what this budget captures is any, any unbudgeted personnel.
Yeah, let's go back and, let's look at this number again because we know we're going to have to apply for highway, right? And I think we, were we able to get to police before? So police and highway were already approved by council, submitted to the town council, and we do have some people's salaries that were impacted in the non-union side. But I think we, we can figure out, we can determine what those numbers are and come up with a better number here.
And, and that's what that 50,000 was last year, was it for all of the union negotiations that were outstanding, that we did not put pay increases into the budget for? Then, page 99, it's the debt service. So these are truly based off of our debt service payments, the principal and interest payments that are due on outstanding debt for the current fiscal year. So you see that that drops down based on the interest payments dropping. And then the final one is the contingency, which is page 103. This has been an historical number since I've gotten here 10 years ago, that we've budgeted 115,000 for the contingency if something comes up that was unbudgeted in, in any given department. On 103?
Any questions on non-departmentals? And on the 16th, we'll come back with another number for, that's set aside number.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last thing. So we, we, we based our mill rate on the grant list. And then we did not have the final grant list with the adjustments. We just got that in last week. I asked Ron to run some numbers and that's the sheet he's going to pass out now. So this is good news. And Ron, I'll let you walk through this. Walk the council through this?
Yep. So the grant list before Board of Assessment Appeals, that we received this right from the assessor from the town, was 1,405,416,892. After they went through their Board of Assessment Appeal process, the number actually increased the grant list by 17 and a half million dollars. So what that means is now the, the tax base is bigger. So when you rerun the, the mill rate, which is your, kind of your backed-in number in order to figure out what you need for taxes to balance the budget, we were originally proposing a 391 mill rate. With this change, it brings it to a 387 or a .2 mill increase currently where it's proposed at with this new information. So what this sheet did was, because I handed out the, the analysis the last time, it just changes that mill rate down to the 3.87 and what that change would be on the assessed value of the 20,000, 100,000. And then to the right, that's just the number from the original sheet that I gave you. So it's by that change in the grant list, the, the taxes on the 20,000 property will, instead of being $4.80, will be $4. So just to kind of give another comparison and update as to where that's at.
So that's the up-to-date. This is, this is new news as of this afternoon.
And this, the set's values still at 70%?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. So 70% of appraised is assessed, yep.
Okay. Any other questions for the finance director? Okay, we'll move on. Bill, sanitation and building maintenance. That starts on page 73.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And tonight I'm going to present the sanitation operating budget for fiscal year ending 2025. Sanitation division supports the collection, transportation, and disposal of the city's municipal solid waste, which is five days a week, recycling, which is four days a week, and bulky waste as requested and scheduled. Fleet vehicles and fleet maintenance are also included in this budget. We will be continuing this year again with a level service across the budget. Increases truly are limited to labor and benefits. We're fully staffed. And regarding the vehicles, I have three vehicles that I need for trash collection and one for recycling. I'll always need four trucks, three plus one, okay? And the reason for that is that if one of the trucks, recycling truck fails, I need to utilize a backup truck to fill that. On holidays, when we have a holiday for Monday example, Tuesday, I'm doing double pickup. So we have to have additional staff and an additional truck. And also leave collection, which we do in spring and fall. And that's a six-week endeavor when we do that, okay? And I'll move over to the actual budget and I'll go through these line by line. I tried to keep these numbers as tight as I could. So I hope you find that to be satisfying. Okay. Okay. So the top line, which we start in supervision, full-time employees, that, that number went up three, I'm sorry, .039%. That includes 20% of the director's salary and 20% of the supervisor's salary. Medicare and taxes went up 5%. I'm sorry, yeah, 5%. And you'll find that consistent throughout for the benefits. Down to sanitation, contractual services, and that is for services that we need that are outside of my garage mechanic to repair sanitation vehicles. No raise in that. Office expenses, advertising, no increase. Vehicle operations and supplies that are materials that we need for the sanitation truck, no increase. Diesel fuel went up $2,000. And that's again, fuel for the sanitation trucks. Full-time employees went up 10%. That is in truly in, because of raises. Okay. Salaries for overtime, no raise at all, no increase. Part-time employees, nothing. And that, no increase there either. That's for summer help. General materials and supplies, those are for the toters. There's no increase in those at all. And a quick blurb on those while I'm speaking about toters. We spent this past year 11,454 on toters and we sold a total of 12,419. So very tight. We make very little bit, very little profit on the toters. We benefit the residents on that. Okay. FICA tax is 5%. Workers' compensation, 5%. Blue Cross, Blue Shield, 5%. Group insurance, 5%. Bulky waste fees, no increase. And that's for the Lisbon wheel abrader fees, okay? And I can talk about that should you wish afterward. Onto recycling, contractual services, that's for the fleet, for just that truck, for the recycling truck, no increase. Vehicle operations and supplies, no increase. Diesel fuel, we went up $5,000. Full-time employees, I went up a total of 3,346,68, which is an increase of 2%. Recycling overtime stayed the same. Part-time employees stayed the same, and that's summer help again, summer help for the recycling part. FICA Medicare taxes, 5%. Bulky waste fees, no increase. And that fee goes to Crandall. Okay, so that's for the recycling. General support is the last category. That, the salaries for that went up 19%. That is a union negotiated thing. That is 33% of the admin salary. So that, that increase truly was 3,789. It just equates to a high number, which is 19%. It's not a lot of money. Salaries increase overtime, zero. FICA taxes, 5%. Blue Cross, Blue Shield, 5%. And unemployment compensation, nothing. Longevity went up zero. And reserve, the last bullet is the reserve fund for the vehicles. That number went down $50,000. Now that is money that we put in the queue for a replacement truck. A quick note on that, we had in 2020, we put $50,000 in. 2021, we put 150,000 in. 2022, we put 250,000 in. 2023, another 100,000. And last year, we put $50,000. So that equates to $600,000 that we had in the queue. We bought a new truck in 2023. That was 294,846. And that leaves me with $305,000 in the queue should we need a new truck for the reserve fund. And that will also be a benefit when we trade in an oil. So I think that's sufficient. So I didn't put any money in the budget for the reserve fund for a new truck. And I spoke to the garage mechanic, I spoke to the supervisor. I think we're good throughout the year. I think we're going to be looking at that new truck next year's budget. Okay. And I'm open for questions, should you have any.
Okay. Questions or comments on sanitation budget? Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Actually, I do have a question. Under diesel fuel, on page 76?
Yep.
Oh, you probably do, and you don't have the same page as us. But the current year budget says 30,000 and then the proposed budget says 37,000. Is that not, because you said $2,000 increase?
No, that's up on the sanitation.
Is it because it's split with recycling and?
Yep. So increase, oh.
So I'll take this one. And I apologize with Bill's transition, he may not have gotten these updated pages that has the roll-up in it. So what, Bill, when he went through his presentation, he was actually doing the detail of these by recycling and also by sanitation. When he talked about the diesel fuel, there was an increase in both sides of that. The 2,000 was one and the 5,000 in the other, which is this.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on sanitation? All right, let's move on to building maintenance.
Okay.
That starts on page 79 is the overall. And then the detail starts on 80.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Again, I'll go through my line items this way if that's okay. So contractual services for the building, no increase, $65,000 again this year. That is, that covers all of the corrective and preventative maintenance that we do on the building. Fire alarm, sprinklers, backflow testing, asbestos abatement, pest control, HVAC, PMs, et cetera. Full-time employees went up 8%. That is 20% of the director's salary and 50% of a laborer for the garage. So that's typically what we do. We, we add a half a person. That covers snow plowing around the building, shoveling, anything that we need. So we utilize a half a body for that. Okay. Okay. Part-time, general materials and supplies, I held that even, no additional cost. That covers all materials that we use around the building, asphalt repair, concrete repair, sanitizers, trash bags, door hardware, any repairs from broken doors, automatic doors, copied paper, belts, filters, stuff like that for the air conditioning, heating, air conditioning systems. FICA Medicare tax went up 5%. Again, that's typical across everything. Workers' comp, 5%. Blue Cross, Blue Shield, 5%. Pension contribution went up zero, no change. Other post-employment benefits, no change. And utilities, fuel, no change at all. And that's it. And that, the utilities fuel, just so you know, that covers GU service charges that we have, cable TV. We use monies that we need down at the cost a house is for quick repairs or something like that. But that's it for the facilities budget. Very, very tight again.
Questions or comments on building maintenance? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to, for clarification, this budget is funded also partially by GU. Is that 22%? What is the percent that's, or is it 20%? And I'm doing math wrong?
It'd be over, it'd be over 20%. The 22 sounds right. And that's just flat 47. That amount's set. It's not an actual percentage per se. Just so you're aware. So if, if the budget goes up or down, it's still the 47,000 that's allocated.
What's, what's the reason for that? That it's not a percentage like of the building they occupy maybe or something?
That was just a decision that was made in 2000.
It's rent, right?
It's part of their, part of their services that they pay.
Right.
But it's not based on a percentage. It's just a flat, flat amount. Kind of like the watershed rent is a flat 10,000 that comes through.
They also pay for the custodial services and the maintenance person, the two salaries for those people that operate out of this building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on building? All right. Thanks, Bill.
Most welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Moving on, I want to go to the city's CIP update, the ARPA funds. So we updated the spreadsheet. These are the projects that council allocated. And so basically, they're complete or we have so basically they're complete or we have, um, RFPs, for our capital projects, RFPs are in progress, or the projects are out, or we're gonna get RFPs out in the summer of, summer or fall of this year. So just want to give you guys a quick update, uh, on this. All right? Any question or comments on that? Uh, Councilor Sheffield?
Right, so what's in red is been, has been expended, uh?
No, oh, wait, what's in?
In red, or is that just a differential?
So it's the difference, so what we have is the estimated cost, the revised cost, and then there's the difference, uh, between the actual cost and what, uh, it's the difference in the cost, right?
The cost and what was spent, basically?
Yeah.
So we lowered by, uh, let's say the, uh, the CAD RMS, we lowered it by thirteen thousand two eighty-three. Is that, that's too good for us or is that?
Well, yes and no. Do you want to talk about? Here, look at this, the CAD RMS.
So that's the, the actual cost to date. That project is still ongoing. Um, there is a open work order. If you recall, it came to the council a couple of months ago and it's with IT. So IT is handling, um, doing all the vendors, they're charging a work order, and then they will bill the, um, the police department or from this grant for the, for that amount. So that, for that proj, that is still in progress. Um, and part of that, it's not just the thirteen thousand, they were actually under with the tasers as well. So it was a combination of those, those unders with that.
So the money that's now, um, additional, that's, that didn't need to be spent, that would go back into the ARPA pool to be used for whatever projects?
We're gonna have some projects that are gonna overspend.
Right, that's what I figured, to roll over, yeah, exactly. Okay.
Any other question or comments on that? All right, moving on to the Branford Manor update. I also provided you guys, uh, some information on the Branford Manor. What was at your table? This is the actual default agreement. So at one point, city and town both entered into default with Branford Manor as a result of the issues that were going on in Branford. Uh, this moisture remediation status report, this was number fourteen, this is off the, the Branford Manor website, and this came from Related, but it also talks about, uh, all four hundred and forty-two apartments have received new air conditioners, crawl spaces have all been, uh, they were inspected, the insulation was removed, piping was replaced, new insulation was put in. For those, all the apartments had now have two-stage fans in the bathrooms. One of the challenges was there wasn't, uh, air movement. So basically what would happen is people would take showers and it'd close the door, not leave the fan on, so you had mold going. So right now, the fan is on all the time, and then when they turn the light on, the fan comes on and, uh, it goes to a higher speed. That way, it's all about moisture remediation. In the basements, they installed dehumidifiers, and the dehumidifiers are plumbed into, uh, the plumbing system so that the water comes out and it's, it goes into the sewer system and then, uh, again, to keep in the basements dry. But, uh, and then if you go to the very last sheet, this was part of the presentation that I gave on the state of Mystic, Stonington, and Groton. And we had forty-six building permits for vapor barriers and installation, that's for each of the buildings. So you had a, a permit for each building. Each building might have nine different units depending on whether they're individual units or if they're going underneath. They had forty-six plumbing permits for sewer piping, plumbing for hot water recirculation lines. Remember, one of the challenges they had is that the lines were cracking and that was causing, uh, moisture problems, so they replaced all those lines. They also took the roof drains and they redirected them into, uh, uh, a, a piping system that now goes into the stormwater drains, so that water doesn't go into the foundation anymore. Uh, forty-six electrical per, permits for the bathroom ceiling fans, sixteen building permits for dehumidifiers and wall enclosures, because remember, not all of the, uh, units have, uh, basements. Only sixteen of the buildings have basements. Uh, sixteen electrical permits for electric panel for the dehumidifiers. So we conducted, Walter, let me be clear on who that is, uh, Walter completed, uh, close to thirteen hundred inspections to ensure everything was properly done. And this whole project took about, uh, I'd say around eighteen months or a little bit more. But we are totally out, we're totally closed out, and, um, I have not received any other complaints. When I checked before this meeting, I checked with Led's Light, they do not have any outstanding mold complaints or any others. And I haven't heard anything else on Facebook and no one's called me. So, uh, if there are issues, also, uh, if you remember, there was a class action lawsuit that was filed and settled, uh, and that's pretty much the update on Branford Manor. Okay. All right, moving on, we're not gonna have executive session because, uh, my perspective, Director of Public Works works on her shift and couldn't get here today. But what I'm gonna do is I will bring him on May sixth, which is a mayor and council meeting. We'll have an executive session, we'll come out of executive session, and there'll be action coming out of that to appoint him as the Director of Public Works starting May seventh. Councilor Piazza?
Will we actually get a res, resume on this candidate?
Sure.
Or all, prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh, and just to let you know, the special mayor and council meeting that was scheduled for following this has been canceled. Everybody should have received notice on that. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, abstention, motion carried, we are adjourned at eight oh one. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out.